Good afternoon. It's Wednesday, April 13, 2016. It's approximately 12:33. This is a meeting of the Finance and Personnel Committee of City Council. I'm Jeff Reisner. I'm the Chair of the Committee. We have an agenda, which I don't see up on the screen, but the first thing that we have on our agenda is our workman's compensation payments. The auditor care to speak to that topic?
I sure would. I believe I'm the one that asked that it be put on there. I know I've come to council before and talked about this, but I need to make you aware, because we were made aware probably a year ago that they were changing the way we make these payments. And so council just needs to be aware as we move forward with other costs for the city of what this means to us this year. We are lucky that we get rebates. We've gotten some big ones. Everyone's gotten the last few years, but we also get other rebates, smaller ones. So last year, we actually spent $205,000 citywide, but it really would have been almost double that without the rebate that we set aside and the other smaller credits that we got. But what happens this year is we will be paying for this year, 2015, we'll be paying for last year, 2015, which is how it's always been. You pay the next year. This year, we also have to go ahead and pay for 2016, and in December, we will be billed for 2017, and there will be a payment due by December 31st. Now, we don't have to pay. We have to pay the full amounts for '15 and '16 this year, but we can get on a payment plan for '17. We plan to do a quarterly payment to see how it works out. Monthly payments are just a lot of work, a lot of extra processing. So this year, we're going to be paying about $278,000, and 2016 will be about $367,000. And if we just do a quarterly payment in December, be about a little over $91,000. My total for this year for workers' comp payments is $736,678. Now, that's an estimate, but it's pretty close. That also takes into account, you should know, that we have a credit from one of the big rebates from last year that we've always set aside of $117,700. So that helps, but it just shows you how much more that payment would be if we didn't have that. And I don't know how much longer they're going to continue these rebates, the big ones. The credits are for different things. Go Green, we get $2,000 for paying online and stuff like that. And there's other things, safety credits and stuff that you can get and that are larger.
Why do they even give us rebates? What is their...
I'm guessing, but I'm thinking they just collected more money than they needed to over the years.
I see.
Does it come with interest?
I don't think so. I really don't know, though.
So it's not like you, I don't know, get a Staples and buy a bunch of paper and they give you $10 rebate?
No.
You mail it in?
This is a new thing that just started three years ago. I think we've gotten three of those big ones that have all been around $100,000 or, you know, a little over.
So if the rebates disappear and we...
Then we're going to add another $100,000 onto that.
At least.
Yes. So just so you know, this I see as being hitting the general fund the most. Police and Fire have the most personnel with the most workers' comp expenses. The Street Fund, and possibly somewhat the Community Center because their budget is so tight to begin with. So just so you know. However, I will say this, that Laura did the calculations, and we have budgeted and appropriated the money to cover this already this year.
Well, once we get past the 2015, '16, and we're now into 2017, '18 where we're always paying forward.
Yes.
How big a hit will you think?
Well, it runs close to $400,000 a year is the average. 368, 395, it kind of depends.
Probably shouldn't have another big shock like...
I don't think so. I don't think so.
Unless they decide to do something like...
Make you pay two years ahead.
Yeah, pay two years ahead.
Yeah.
Five years.
Yeah. And the payments, yeah, there'll be a true-up, too. So then when we pay ahead, if we overpay, but it's not going to be, if you look at the history of our payments, it's not going to be, you know, tens of thousands of dollars, maybe 10 or even 20, but it's not going to be a big windfall.
Right.
And it'll go up and down a little bit depending on how many employees we have in positions and things like that, so...
Well, you want it to be as close as possible anyway, so...
Yeah.
Are they charging interest if we're doing quarterly? Are they charging for that?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No, I don't think so.
So, and our expectation is that they want 2018 at the end of whenever?
Yes, yes. So next year will be a little bit of a hit, too, because we'll be, yeah, we'll be paying and then we'll get another bill ahead of time. But if we stay on the quarterly plan or can do it differently, we have always paid half in May and half in September, which is how they've had it set up, because it's just too big of a hit to the fund balance. One year, we paid it, not me, someone at my office, paid it in February, and it was an issue for the Street Fund because they just didn't have the fund balance to carry that. We had to reduce a bunch of encumbrances and things like that.
That wasn't in the proprietary fund for the Street?
No, no.
Yeah, okay.
But the fact is, in the beginning of the year, all that money that we're projecting to receive is not in our account. And so I see that as being really bringing our unappropriated balances down this year and taking, you know, another year to build that back up. So, and there are some other things about that, and I don't know if you want to go ahead and me to talk about it now, but I guess I will.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is another thing regarding finances and the fund balances and things like that is we are getting ready, I assume, to borrow a lot of money for a new pool. And when we do that, we will go through a bond process to try to keep our current bond rating. And it is a process we've done before, but it involves, I've talked about this before, the mayor, council members, treasurer, my office, and we will work with our consultant from Baird, and then we will have to deal with Moody's out of Chicago to get that certified. And then the bond goes out nationally for bid and all that. Part of that process involves our cash reserve and debt fund policies, which we put into place in 2010 because we were going through this process then. So the other thing I'm looking at is our cash reserves of how much we should have in place. And there's nothing, no legal ramifications if we would drop below our policy, except it will cost us in this process of borrowing money if we don't pay attention to that now or at least for the next few months until we actually borrow that money. Mayor?
So are you referring to one of the things that can't happen out of the rates that our rating goes down? Could it affect our rating?
Yes, which means we pay more interest. And we're talking about, you know, probably a 16 to 20-year bond. And so it would affect our interest. That goes out on an amortization schedule. There's no change in that. We had to wait 10 years to change that for our Community Center bond. After 10 years, you're allowed to refinance it, and that's what we did. We saved the city $350,000 doing that. But if we start out at a lower bond rating and get stuck with that interest, we'll have that for at least 10 years. So, just saying.
Can you tell us what our current bond rating is?
AA2. AA2. And, you know, the likelihood that our size, we are nowhere near our debt ceiling or anything like that, but because of our size and limited resources, we're not likely to go above that, but we don't want to go below that. You know, we really do handle our money pretty well, and we should be able to hang on to that. And that's really all we're doing is we're trying to keep that rating.
The Moody's also will be looking at the economic environment of the area.
Yes.
Looking at our tax bases, employment, poverty, which we're always getting nailed and so on.
Sure.
But on the other hand, we have Ohio University.
We do. We have very steady, regular tax base because of that.
Mm-hmm.
We do. And they'll take that into account. But any other businesses, it's a big picture they want, and they'll branch out a little bit to county things. And I don't know if any of you guys were around when we did that in 2010, probably not, but I have a booklet that we put together with pictures, and it's very interesting and it's a big deal to do that.
Which you do.
So, I know. So last time, we did this by conference call phone and had, you know, Nancy Bane, the treasurer, everybody in the conference room up front. Our bond consultant this time is kind of encouraging us to go to Chicago so to present it. Well, they like that face-to-face, so, you know, we'll see. Well, and actually, I was talking to the City Schools treasurer, and they go there when they need to do that, so. If we have any other questions about that.
There is one here. You have one, can I? There's one.
I'll go ahead and throw out my one other thing because it's not a huge thing, if you don't mind. We met with Judge Grace yesterday afternoon, and as you know, you've helped fund this diversion program he's put in place, and they need a van. So when they take these clients out to do community service throughout the county, our municipal court is a county, City-City Municipal Court. The one they have is from 1994, and I think they inherited it from the Street Department or somewhere else. And they started up once, next time it wouldn't start. He'd like to get a newer van so that they're not out somewhere with, you know, a dozen people and get stuck. So he is asking for appropriation of $50,000 from the, we have a different name on it now, but we're using it for the diversion program also. I think it's, anyway, it's Fund 232, B-Transaction Class 500. And don't know that he'll need that full amount. He's not necessarily looking for a new one, but he needs a 15-seater, and so he's going to shop around and get the best deal he can. But we kind of agreed it wouldn't cost more than $50,000. He doesn't want to spend more than that, but it could be even half that or something. I don't know. But they have enough unappropriated money that if we appropriate that, it's not going to make it hard for them in the other areas of their fund. Mayor?
It's an old van, first of all.
Yeah.
As I'm sitting there, it's been...
94.
Likely high miles since it was inherited.
We went to Workman's Comp. We talked about bonds, and now we're talking about diversion program.
Briefly.
I'm sorry, I was talking to the committee. Probably would. I'm just thinking that since this is a joint county-city, couldn't the county throw in a few bucks?
Well, yeah, the thing is, our court is collecting all the money, and it's in that fund. So even though, yeah, it's a responsibility of this fund and this program. So whether the people who come to his courtroom, that he decides a diversion rather than jail could be from the county, they're the ones paying for this, putting the money in the fund. So it's a combination of city and county people putting the money in there. They have about $400,000 in that fund to use for this program.
Sounds like it needs a bus.
Yeah. So technically, we're not putting any money. This is money they've collected from the people who...
We're just saying, yes, they can appropriate it.
Well, if they do, if this, I'm just thinking here, if we, if he gets his van, the 16-seater, it's still going to have to be ADA compliant. It's going to have to meet all those standards.
I don't know anything about that.
I'm sorry.
We actually were meeting for another reason, and he brought this up, and I said, "Well, they're meeting tomorrow." This was like 3:30 yesterday, so they need to do that.
I would encourage that the judge should look at, and probably his state purchasing because the mayor pointed out that $50,000, you're at that bid, but since we are participating in...
DAS?
DAS, thank you. Procurement, I think you could go through that.
Yeah, and I think he already went online to try to look at that stuff a little bit. It's just kind of come up now that the weather has gotten better, they're starting. It's a new program they're starting, so, yeah. So if you have anything else specific to community, the van or the procurement process, should just go directly to the judge.
I just have one comment. When we talk about replacing objects such as cars and trucks and stuff, I would like to, I'd like to point out that it seems that they're always like 85 years old. And I'd like to commend all the people who are maintenance people because we seem to really get our money's worth out of these vehicles. I mean, like when we retire them, they won't, I mean, people don't even want to be given them because they're so used. And I'd just like to point that out because here's another example. So, anyway.
I agree. We see a lot of really old vehicles finally coming through for disposal, so...
Right. So it's not like we're out buying a new car everywhere, so...
And they'll have to go through our disposal process. We did talk to him about that briefly, so...
So we can send it to Mexico.
We do need to do a better job of sustaining our fleet. We do. I mean, this is what you said, Member Falls. I agree. As a matter of fact, I just came from a meeting back over here in a rather old Impala.
Not that one.
But we do, I think, as a city, we do really well with, lack of a better way to put it, with hand-me-downs to where they kind of go down the pecking order and we continue to run them until we've run the wheels or the transmissions right out of these vehicles, but...
I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. But we do have, yeah, as we roll forward, and again, probably not a conversation to be having here, but it's just, you know, getting greener vehicles that are replacing the non-green vehicles.
How soon do you think the, does it come before council for appropriations?
He's ready now.
Okay. Kind of had a figure.
So I don't know if there's, I think on the agenda, there might be another appropriation, so you have an appropriation ordinance coming up. And he realizes it might have to go through three readings, but he's ready to get that started. They've hired someone for that program, and she's already working, and so they want to start this every other Saturday thing.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Arts Parks Recreation Replacement mower. Who wants to speak to that?
Another sustainability issue. It's amazing to me to think that we've been able to maintain and keep in service a 20-year-old mower, but it's needed.
What kind of mower was it, or is it?
Is it a Gravely?
Or John Deere or something like that?
I don't recall.
You ought to get one.
Rich would like to do the trade-in value, so if that disposal language of the old one, when he goes forward to purchase this, could be included. I asked why we're not buying a new mower. Well, he said those are upwards of $60,000 and that this one has not much use on it in terms of hours, and so they're looking towards purchasing that.
Do you want to inherit a mower with the cemetery takeover?
Seems to me we had to help them with a mower. We might have already replaced one of them.
We did.
So it died.
It was part of the list of items that we inherited for the cemetery, but again, another aging piece of equipment that we inherited.
Okay.
Am I correct in the quote, looking at 2007, 2011, and 2010? So those are comparison prices on the used equipment?
Two, yeah, one of those, 2011 or 2017. They're still evaluating it, but they'd like to get the appropriation started so that they can...
So I'll go through the normal three readings. There's no crisis about it, or...
Well, I don't know. The grass is growing, but we'll, I can apprise as it goes through.
Goat.
No goats? Yeah.
What's the going rate for a used goat?
I know where we...
I'm not surprised.
They're about to all have kids.
Anything I want to say about that? You're going to bring the legislation forward and we'll...
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
People think I'm teasing about goats.
Next, Clemens Nelson Non-Union Compensation Plan. The biggie. Just want to get everything organized here so I'm seeing everything. Who wants to lead off?
Hello?
Madam Auditor.
Go for it, why not? Okay, here's what I have to say, and I wrote it out. We were asked to review the cost impact of the new plan. However, this has been extremely difficult, if not impossible, for several reasons. One, the reclassifications or promotions that have been plugged into the spreadsheet. Employees who have been promoted or reclassified have left vacant positions, and we didn't know whether or not they were going to be filled or eliminated. And two, the new positions that we don't know if they are planning to hire or not. Those, some of those new positions have changed throughout the process. Are all of these spots to be budgeted for? We asked for guidance regarding the vacant positions and just received information yesterday afternoon. That information is problematic because of the inaccuracies. The budget for two part-time employees does not equal the cost to the city of one full-time employee by any stretch. I'll let Laura give you more information regarding those issues. There are also many other issues we see regarding placement and years of service, which, you know, Mayor, Finance Chair, and I, and Laura, talked about a lot of this stuff last week. I have requests, however, this is more specific to me because we went through a whole list of our questions. I have requests regarding two employees in my office. First concerns the administrative assistant payroll position, and I have mentioned this to both of you. She started off as my administrative assistant nine years ago. When the payroll administrator gave notice four years ago, I asked her to take that position. She continued to perform the duties of both positions, and I waited to see if we really wanted to fill the other position. She is now being penalized for years of service because we changed her title. She continues to perform all of the payroll duties and the majority of the administrative assistant duties. I believe she deserves to get full credit for her years of service in my office and ask that this spreadsheet be adjusted to reflect that. I'm also requesting the deputy auditor be given the 25% bump through the pay grade that is allowed when hiring someone in the new plan. The way it is presented now, she has been underpaid and will only be brought up to the minimum. She had been the deputy auditor for a year and eight months, left for five months, and came back at the same pay rate. She has now been here over a year and is only being given the recent years of service. Technically, that is how it should be. However, she will be making the same pay as the new co-director, who just started, and who will be getting a probationary increase in a few months. That will then have him making more than the deputy auditor after only being here six months. I'm now also asking council to delay starting an ordinance for at least two weeks. I have two reasons. Even though an email was sent to the department heads asking them to distribute the latest version of the spreadsheet to their staff, this did not happen. We were asked to send an email, the email, to an employee just yesterday because she had not seen it. I'm not sure why the all-employee city email wasn't used in the first place, but it was promised that all the employees would be able to review this document. Second, the financial impact has not been calculated because of the issues we are seeing in the spreadsheet. It is fine that Clemens Nelson put this together with what they know about the city positions, but this should be reviewed more closely by council and the administration, taking into account the actual positions and the people in them. This is too important to the affected employees and to our financial position to rush through. I know the administration wants this to become effective July 1st, but that would still give council time to go through three readings if we put this off a couple of weeks. We just really cannot do the calculations with what we have. And I'll let Laura address some of the issues. As I said, you know, I just mentioned a couple in my office, and that's just the beginning.
Excuse me. Okay, thank you.
I'll try and do my best here. You're receiving, and I apologize that you're receiving it just now, because I understand it's a lot to try and absorb in a short period of time, but...
That's what we're here for.
Yeah. So the top piece is the proposed implementation cost provided by Clemens Nelson on April 5th. The next document is their spreadsheet, but I have put it in a somewhat different format to try and figure out a few, a few things.
Which paper is that?
This is the Laura Carter spreadsheet.
Oh, okay.
And it has larger print.
Yes, I can read it.
Yes, than the Clemens Nelson. So I did change from job classification to job title. I guess in my own opinion, it seemed more appropriate, but it is interesting when you start looking at the percentage of pay grade, how a person moves through the pay grades. For instance, you'll see the Service Safety Director after eight years and four months is only 21 point, with the new increase, will only be 21.27% through the pay grade, although it's recommended by Clemens Nelson that at least eight years, that person should be at 40%. So this spreadsheet has some comparisons that are a little more difficult to find on the Clemens Nelson. It's interesting also that our city engineer after seven years is at 78.41%. Chief, fire chief, two years, four months, is 87.82% there through the pay grade. The police chief, the date that Clemens Nelson has, July 7th of 2004, as being their position title date, in researching the files, that date was the date that person became captain.
Right.
The date they became chief was 2011. So they've been in that position for five years and are at 105%. Dropping down to Director of Code Enforcement, the date again on Clemens Nelson report is wrong, should be March 1st of 2015 instead of April 1st, again, of '16. Again, that would put this person at four months of service, and I need to point out that these dates are as of, it says as of July 1st, 2016, so it's not as of today that I'm speaking. Again, as the auditor said, that person after six months will get a 3% increase, which will increase their pay from $28.80 to $29.67. Assistant City Engineer is a brand-new title. It hasn't been in our city ordinance, and... And the employee who is in that position or has been slotted into that position or reclassified into that position is, started in 2009. They say their position title date is that day, although there was no position title of that sort in 2009. Is receiving full credit, six years and 11 months. There are several others who are being reclassified and are receiving full credit from day one, which I spoke about at our last meeting. The Chief City Prosecutor, again, is, on the Clemens Nelson report, provided four years of service from May 17, 2004. If you look at the personnel records, she began as an intern. She wasn't eligible to be prosecutor until she passed the bar in 2006. There's a letter in her file saying that she was reclassified last year and given a 25% within that pay range, pay raise.
So was she a paid intern in 2004? Is that why?
I believe she was.
Okay, thank you.
So what I'm seeing are some inconsistencies about how time with the city is being calculated. What I'd like to see is something more formal that says, person, these are the guidelines we're using for reclassification, for promotion, that type of thing. Again, the Police Captain has four years and 11 months and is 91.77% through their pay grade. So again, I guess that question brings up, are these people going to be given regular general increases until they hit 100%? Or are they, will they be treated differently? I don't know. Jump back up to the Fire Captains, all who have 19 to 21 years of service. It's hard to say where they should be placed because the Clemens Nelson scenario stops at 10 years. And we have a lot of employees that have more years of service. Says that they should be 50% at 10 years, but after that, there's no guidance as to where they should be. Again, there's a new position, Assistant Director of Public Works, right now vacant. I'm not sure what the plan is for that. We did just recently, earlier today, get some more information, so I haven't had time to incorporate the new information into this spreadsheet, and I apologize.
Can I ask you a question about spreadsheets? I remember getting the spreadsheets from Clemens Nelson's. I've gotten the reports, and they're usually like a PDF file, which is just a copy of the output of the spreadsheet, but not the spreadsheet itself, so I can't really see the formulas behind it in the cells. Have you ever got a copy of a live spreadsheet?
No.
Where you can see what their, what their formulas are?
No.
Administration hasn't either.
They just say, if we had one and it stopped at 10 years, we would at least know the formula, and we could extend it up to 20, or 25, or 30, or...
Right. I mean, yeah, is the meeting last week with the auditor, I mean, that was certainly something that we had been talking about, what happens at the 10-year?
Exactly.
Is it just continual, looking at, you know, four, six, eight, you know, 10, then 12, is it this incremental, is it the same incremental change over time? Or is, you know, is there some exponential bump that happens somewhere? But I think in that conversation, we were assuming, and that's a terrible thing to do, but we were assuming that it was just this linear growth pattern across, or through that pay band.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 it's a good question.
When ideas pop in my head, I, if I don't get it on, I forget them.
Good question. Here's, here's another question. We can, if you're on pay grade six, just on the second page.
Page two.
Page two, under pay grade six.
On the Laura Drucker.
You'll see that the, well, that's not a good, good example. Let me jump to another one. Let's jump back, and actually, Paula has been in her position eight years and four months, when this is to be implemented. Six months from the implementation, is she going to get a bump up because she will have reached nine years? Same with the, anybody else on this sheet that hasn't hit a benchmark, if they're going to hit that benchmark after July 1st of 2016, does that mean that they will get an increase as well?
She's got, Kathy has some extra stuff.
So you're suggesting that there may be a few more examples besides our City Service Safety Director?
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, yeah. There are definitely...
Which, they'll be getting a yearly...
Actually, yeah, there are quite a few. I mean, if you're in the, some of these have hits, are high enough in their pay grade that it's not going to matter. So the next one, City Engineer, seven years and one month, even though they hit eight years, it doesn't seem appropriate to bump them if they're 78% through the pay grade.
So, in, if I'm reading between the lines, if we don't have this figured out, then we're going to run into morale issues again when someone's celebrating an anniversary, and then all of a sudden, they're not seeing typical normal pay increase. Is that sort of what you're alluding to as well?
That would be my guess, that you'll have individuals who say, well, employee X hit the mark by July, and I didn't, but I did in August. Why am I being treated differently?
Yeah.
I just...
Well, I'll let you go to the bottom.
Well, yeah, I'm getting there. Getting there.
We'll work on it.
There's a lot, there's a lot.
This is very helpful.
So, yeah, we'll go there. So if you take the Clemens Nelson spreadsheet with the smaller type font, and you go to the very back page, and you look under, they have a pay grade two, the top bracket in that page, you look on the far right, you'll see that the suggestion is to bring the General Secretary of Code, and the two data entry operators, all up to the same amount, $14.45. What will happen with a person in code who's only been here as of July 1st, only five months, that person, again, a month later, will get a probation increase of 3% and be making more than the data entry operators are making, which is one of the things we were trying to avoid in doing this.
I don't know if I saw the numbers. Can you repeat that whole statement, please?
Are you in the last page of Clemens Nelson?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Go to the far right, the last two columns, you'll see that the column that says proposed wage.
Okay.
The first one is $18.94, and then the last three are $14.45.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
I think I see the 14, 45. No, I don't see 18.
We have 16, 94.
Yeah, 16, 94 on ours.
It's okay, it's small.
Yeah, it is a small font.
Well, that means you have a different one than I do.
Oh, no.
Why are we giving out a different one?
I have 16, 94.
At the top?
For proposed wage.
Yeah, at the very top. But then the last three, what do they say? The next three.
These three positions.
Oh, you mean under new, not the very last.
So if you look at that higher date, that's 121, but their hire dates are 14, 15, but this person's going to be at the same rate.
Gotcha, okay. Despite the different hire rate.
Right, right, okay.
Okay.
And will we ever be able to...
And be getting a probationary rate.
But will we ever be able to, I mean, is that always, that kind of situation always potentially going to happen during this transition period of time?
Not necessarily, no. I mean, right now, you're only moving the data, data entry operators up by 1.69 and 2.66, 37 cents and 24 cents. The cap is $2.
Well, it's moving the General Secretary up to 52 cents. But that brings them in that classification, though, they all need to come up to the 14, 45.
Then you need to move the ones that have been here longer further into the pay band.
Got it, okay.
Gotcha.
And are there any other instances? I'm sorry for arriving late, but there are any other instances that happened, or is that anymore?
There's one more.
Yeah, I'll talk about it. I already did this, sorry.
So Deputy Auditor, who was here for a year and eight months, left for five, has been here over a year and three months now, so it'll be about a year.
And here's the Deputy Auditor.
Is being brought up to the minimum in that pay grade, and is going to be making the same as the new co-director who just started two months ago. Within four months, the co-director will be getting a probationary increase, which will put him over the deputy auditor. It's the exact same situation.
And so Clemens...
So, yeah, the thing, there's a lot of them.
I wouldn't say there are a lot of them, but they're...
And Clemens and Nelson have some suggestions, though, based on years of service, but they don't break it down to less than year on their recommendations.
No, no, their recommendations start at, at least two years, so under two years.
So is there...
The other thing is, there are people, and I don't want to pick on anybody in particular, who are being given their full years of service, and I'll just say, the, as we already mentioned, the Chief City Prosecutor has been here 12 years. Well, two years as an intern, which typically should not count as years of service, number one, and number two, has not been Chief City Prosecutor that whole time. That only happened a year ago. So the problem is, that standard isn't being applied to everyone. There are people who are being, given full years of credit, even though they're being reclassified, new job title, promotion, and they're getting full years of credit in that new position, and then other people, and Leanna and Laura are not the only ones, all these data entry operators, utilities billing, same thing, where they are only being given years of service in their current title. And what this new, you know, spreadsheet has done is condensed them all down to being at an equal level. And it's just really, the thing is, Clemens Nelson did all this work, and they presented this, they don't know these people, they don't truly know what these, all these positions do in our city. And I feel it's up to the administration and council to really vet this and look at these people who've been here, and where they are, and what they've been doing, and if you want to give them full credit, that's fine, but it needs to be fair. You don't just pick and choose who you want to give full credit and who you want to hold down. And the idea that, you know, if you don't think that those data entry operators, you know, to me, that's just an ugly thing, to have someone who's been here for two or three years getting paid less than someone who's just hired because they got that, this is the same situation we ran into last year with the police department and the prosecutor's office, of a new person coming in and getting their probationary bump and making more than the person who has already been there.
So your suggestion is within those ranges, or those classic, yes, within the 12 ranges, that we look line by line at each of the employees?
I do, I do.
In terms of hire date and what the pay increase would be with a turn...
What they're actually doing.
...equity long-term? And then your other thing is, if I'm hearing you right, is consistent...
Wait a minute, Kathy.
Sorry. The other suggestion I think I'm hearing from you is to look at credit for years of service and to apply that in a consistent manner, because you've noted several inconsistencies. So to look at each of the descriptions in terms of that.
So if you want to do that, then it needs to be fair. You know, the way it stands now, two people sitting next to each other that have both worked there for nine years, side by side, and all of a sudden, one of them's going to be making a lot more than the other one. You know, it's just not, and it's not right. The other person's the one who took on all the extra duties. It needs to be looked at. And what I wanted to say, and sorry that I kept interrupting, is that's already been done. There's an email from Andy, and I agree with what happened, but when he, I don't know how many of you would have remembered this, but when he was deployed back in 2005, he was gone over a year, and he was the street director, was an EPW, and there were two positions under him, two people, and one person moved up and did his job for that year as interim director. The other person did both of those jobs for a year, okay? They didn't replace that position because Andy was coming back. So he requested, and rightly so, that that person be given credit, so then, after a year, he continued to just do the one job, and they expanded it. I don't know if he got a raise or whatever, but he got a new title. So Andy said, you know, he'd already been doing this for a year, he should be given credit for doing that position, and they did. It's been changed in there. I agree with it, but that's the kind of individual thing that needs to be looked at, and what people have done. Because, you know, otherwise, he did, he was doing it for a year, and then, but if you just go by when his job title changed, then he didn't. But that has been changed in there. That person was given years of service from the year before he actually got the new position.
Member Lillard.
Thank you. And I appreciate the homework that the auditor's office has done to help us in scrutinizing this. So along with our president, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're suggesting that we err on the side of caution instead of really hurrying up to embrace every suggestion that the consultants have made, so that we do treat our employees fairly through this process. Is that correct?
Right. That's my question, is that you actually look at it and see the impact it's going to have on our individual employees?
Councilmember, Paul.
I think there's an additional issue that...
Can the mayor speak?
That I'd like to bring forward, and that is that the Clemens Nelson report is based on, at least that was the request that department heads provide the JAQs, which is a Job Analysis Questionnaire, which is a self-reporting document. I don't know how much review those documents went through. They are not typically what you see as a job description, because again, it's self-reported. So for instance, there's a JAQ for a Director of Department that has no full-time employees, received full credit for supervision, 1,000 points, whereas there are several managers of our plant, wastewater treatment plant and waste treatment plant, that supervise eight full-time employees and only received 500 points for supervision. So I think that there needs to be a close look at what the original data is that Clemens Nelson used, so...
Let me get the mayor. I think you're segling me. I'm sorry.
Thank you, I'm rising there. We're going to rewind a little bit. One thing's, I'm just curious about is, is, and I kind of get it, you know, as to why we do a 3% bump after someone's probationary period, but why do it at all? I mean, you come in, there's still a probationary period, you know, that person, if they, if they're fulfilling the duties and responsibilities that have been bestowed upon them, you know, are we rewarding somebody with a 3% bump because, gee, you're doing everything I hired you into this? I hired you into this position to do? And so why are we doing that? You know, that's another, this is an opportunity to strike that. It doesn't make much, if any, sense to me. And it's part of what's causing a lot of problems with this, and auditor Heck, I agree with you with, you know, when someone's coming in and when someone can be surpassed salary-wise, and I get that. I think eliminating this three percent bump, or any reward for doing what we have now hired you to do, as opposed to your annual increases or whatever, that's one thing. And quite honestly, I've completely blanked on what the other things are. I do also believe that there are some discrepancies in here, you know, in terms of time and service and whatnot. I think two weeks to review this and go through and clean it up, I think a lot can be cleaned up in three weeks. I think it's going to be a lot of work on everyone's part, but I think it's, it's not only worth doing, it's prudent to do. And we go through and we clean this document up, JAQs, that was the third thing I wanted to mention real quick. And deputy auditor, I agree with, and I did when I was on council, I agree with the JAQs, they're subjective, in my formal world, we saw that as well with annual evaluations, you're doing it, you're evaluating yourself, you can have someone who's very modest and thinks that they're doing what they just should be doing, and they're going to under-report, you can have people who love to just over-embellish their VITA and say, "I have done everything save walking on wire." But that said, that said, be it as it may, Clemmons and Nelson worked with what they had. They had to have something to work with, and unfortunately, or fortunately, or however you want to look at it, they used the JAQs. I also agree with you that, that they probably should have been vetted a little bit more stringently, as there's more eyes on it, I guess, is what I'm getting at, as the JAQs came forward. However, it's what Clemmons and Nelson, within a four-month span of time, a process that typically takes ten months to, ten to twelve months to go through, to where they could do their own assessment and evaluation and gather that data, they did what they, did what they could do. But I'll get off my soapbox, I agree that there could be some cleanup. I think a two-week span of time is plenty to do that cleanup with this document. I would strongly encourage people to think about striking this, rewarding people for doing what they're supposed to be doing, because they fulfilled their duties and responsibilities with this probationary period bump. Why in the world we're doing that? I don't get it. It creates part of the problem that we're having to deal with, so.
Councilmember Paul.
Okay, I'd like to step back a little bit and see exactly what is being asked of counsel, because some of this stuff seems to be administrative, you know, deciding exactly how you're going to count each month or partial thereof, that needs to be a policy that's put together, and if you want counsel's input, and okay, that's one. The other thing is, I think the reason why you have a consultant come in is because they're neutral. They don't know all the personalities of every single person, and when they got a new puppy, and this and that, which is really important, puppies are important. But that's, we need to take that and figure out some of the formulas, maybe that would give us an ease in cleaning some of the data up. But I'm not comfortable, I guess, as counsel, I'm not comfortable in doing all the, well, this person's been in this place, and this person's been in this place, that's like, the department heads and such have to make value judgments, but counsel can't do that. I mean, that's not counsel's, and I don't want it, because that's why we hire consultants. And I'm wondering if the bump is because the unions, in union, some of the union contracts, we have a bump. That's just something to ask. Also, maybe what needs to also be said is, at the end of the probationary periods, when they start being able to get certain benefits, right? I mean, that's kind of, you know, that's like, if they quit before six months, they don't get six, you know, however many days vacation that would be of normally accrued. So there's already that bump. So.
A lot of what you said, sorry. After me, you would do that. I promise you. There is a lot of policy that has to come out of this process, and there will be a lot of policy that comes out of this process, laying out what the, what is, have it in black and white, spelling out, you know, all the issues that are coming up here, and that's what we're going to have to do, that's what I'm going to have to do.
State's director.
I, each department head has not had the ability to come forward to you, and I can have that occur. And each one has different issues related to this classification and compensation and years of service. I hear the auditor talking about years of service. I would contend I have at least three different positions that people have come to me saying, essentially, this individual has been doing this job since oh-nine, you know, oh, twenty-fourteen or when have you. I've tried to not wade into it to that level in order to avoid this, but if that's the task, I will, we will indeed go through that. One of the reasons that I attempted to not wade into it at that level is because of the cost. I'm cognizant, I think we're facing two hundred thousand dollars, we kind of thought that that was probably the max in terms of the stress across the different fund lines, but recognizing that that could increase. So even, that's why when we had this conversation before, it was how, how long in that position and what years. So I guess I'll stop being non-vocal, and I will spend the next week and a half identifying each one of those individuals that feels that they should be recognized for their years of service as well. I'm also, and I don't know if it's in here or not, I am an advocate for a one-time pay adjustment for those that went up, topped out, if that's something that can be included, whether that be a flat five hundred or a hundred thousand dollars annually, as opposed to when they're topped out and they don't receive any increase. There's one significant position here that you see.
Critical.
That is critical to the city, and I don't feel, just because they've reached that level. And when you look at those percentages, and I know you know this, part of the reason that we have some of the higher echelon making that seventy-eight percent, eighty-two percent, a hundred and five percent, is based on the previous model of when someone leaves a position and is offered a higher level of responsibility, all the different factors that went into that in terms of, you know, whether they had overtime or eligible for overtime, and the years of service and getting an average of three years. So I, maybe even that needs to be looked at as we go forward, so. But I'd hate to throw this whole process out, I have to agree with you, that, yes, JAQs are subjective, they've read everyone in detail, and some of the reasons some of these positions are two grades above other, what I would call administrative support clerical positions, are due to what was included in those JAQs, so.
Councilmember Paul.
I think, I agree, I, you know, we don't need to throw, and I wasn't suggesting that. Counsel has certain obligation, our obligation is not to wade into personnel, you know, issues. Also, you know, I guess on one thing, it's, it's never been quite communicated to me quite as I would like it, exactly what our end point of this whole process is. Is it to have, I mean, I can see it being several, to be more competitive in the job market, so we get highly-paid people, or to have happy, high morale in all our, sometimes we have to recognize that those two may not mesh in every single position, and that we can't, we, we cannot fine attune the policy and the ordinance to take into account every single little personnel issue. And that's not our job, that's, that's why the department heads are in a different pay grade than the people who are, so. I just kind of want to be very firm in where our different jobs and roles are.
Well, to be clear, one of the outcomes of this from Clemmons Nelson was the, by position and your slotting, even if you stay here twenty-five years, you know, the top range for a pay band two or three may increase, but it's not, it's not, that becomes, that's what the value of that position is, as opposed to ever jumping to a four or five level, so. And that's been noted by employees as well. You know, I can make between fourteen forty-five and nineteen fifty-one. As time goes on, there's, maybe the minimum-max increases a little bit, but it's going to be, that's going to be the box that they're assigned to.
I don't know who'll raise their hand first. Okay, you're next.
Yeah, one thing to remind you about probation, is that also is a time where you're trying out that employee, and can fire them within that time without, you know, going through any other kind of process, which I have done. And so there is something to be said for having a probationary period. How you want to treat it financially, that's up to you. And I want to make it clear, I'm not asking council members to go through this and look at this, because you don't know all of these positions of people that are in them, and it's just a fact that aside from the mayor's office or HR, my office knows all these people intimately, because we pay them, and we deal with them all the time. And we have to recognize, make adjustments, and do everything that they need, and they come and talk to us about that. One other thing I want to point out is, you know, in the vetting of this, I just, and I, I think it is a good model. I like the twelve bands, I think they've done a decent job, but all I'm saying is, they, some of them are off, and because, no, the JACs are not what they should go by, they should go by job descriptions, but if they didn't have them, they did what they could, but now it's up to the city to make this actually fit our people. That's all I'm asking for. And when we do these reclassifications and things, I think most of you know by now that, you know, Laura's been in HR for twenty years at Hocking College before she came here. She knows all about this and the rules that apply. And when you reclassify, that's typically done by a committee. And this feels like a little bit hit or miss, like the individual department heads can send an email and ask for this and that, and same with me, and, and it just doesn't feel like it's a very coordinated effort that includes other people in the city. And I just think that, yeah, it, it takes some more looking at, and no, I'm not asking you to do it, I'm asking you to wait before you start the ordinance, but that's why. Okay, does that make sense?
Human Resources Director.
Thank you. I do have a lot of comments and answers based upon what has been discussed today, but it would probably take me about an hour to do. I will be working with Mayor Patterson and State Safety Director, Perin Mosley, to discuss those things, but I just want to clarify that this project was done as a starting point to get us to pay equity, to get us to a point where everyone was closer to what the internal equity and the external market, where those positions needed to be. And that's what's the most important. This structure or this plan really is the foundation of supporting the city, it's our employees. Thank you.
Member Nicely.
Just to respond, but I think we're all wholeheartedly for, and as we've all said, Clemmons Nelson and the work that they've done, that they're the experts, and it begins to bring us to equity, so. If that could happen within the next two weeks, do you think the review might be possible for the detail?
I'm trying to look at the calendar.
Two to three weeks, because I know we're also looking at a Chairperson Reisner, July one.
So it'd be nice to bring this...
July one implementation.
It'd be nice to bring it forward May second, but we'll just see if we can, but we should have this committee meeting again before, two weeks is the twenty-seventh, I think, of them, tracking this rate.
Yeah, May second would be two weeks, however, if you started the second regular meeting in May, you would still have three readings, and it would be in place before July first. So the goal would be...
Later than May sixteenth, is I guess to introduce.
You're saying first reading on May the sixteenth?
As long as we've reconvened and questions have been answered to your satisfaction, so. And I do have a miscellaneous, just...
We're not done yet.
I guess it's more of a comment than anything else, I just hope that, having been involved with reclassifications and new positions quite a bit at the college, what I learned most from employees, that is what they want to be treated fairly, and if we're going to look at when a person started into this job, there should be some standardized guidelines. And I hope that in looking at the job descriptions and the JACs, not just today's JAC, but the one that the person was hired in at, that there is something that we could provide all employees that says, this is how we looked at it, to try and have a standard that would be equal to all employees.
Any other comments? Okay, so we're going to use all's, just going to get like, end of this, end of the weeds, and we'll come back again and have all our answers answered, or questions answered, yeah. Maybe we need some more questions, I don't know. We're not, we're not a solution company, we're a problem company, that's what we do, we provide problems. You said you had a miscellaneous?
The bids came in for the accessibility lift.
Oh, yeah.
From the city building. It came in under the ten percent, but it came in above the thirty-five thousand, so we're going to ask for an increase in appropriation. It came in at thirty-seven thousand and something, what about that?
I cannot remember, was twenty-five hundred or twenty-nine hundred additional money? Seems to me it came out one oh-one, five hundred.
Looking at the original ordinance here.
It has fifty-five thousand.
But this was...
The lift itself is part of that, it's not part of the bid for the installation of this, this is the installation construction bid for opening up the walls to have the lift put in, the lift itself.
Oh, okay. Ouch.
The lift itself was eight thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars or something along those lines, so this is just for the installation, installation and having to cut holes through the wall.
Member Nicely.
I'm sorry, would you do the math for me again? Chair, installation, grand total, and why we're coming back again?
We did get authorization to bid it, because the total cost was going to exceed fifty thousand. We also had additional structural engineering costs. I can get you to date where we are, I could not, I don't feel that I have the authority to enter into that contract, but we'll, we'll review the costs and itemize it to you today.
Okay, and I didn't mean to make you do more homework, I was just hoping that maybe you had the, the numbers that, because I'm not remembering though, well.
Wait, what is it, the lift was eight thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars, the bid came in at thirty-seven, and I can't remember, thirty-seven five. And then there's the engineering component, engineering and design.
That'll kick us over.
This all kicks us over, the email. That's, that's all I was wanting to know.
We'll run the numbers.
That's all.
We will, we'll have everything for you.
Okay, so an additional appropriation for the ballpark figure?
I think it's, it's twenty-eight hundred dollars, two thousand eight hundred, somewhere in there, don't forget that, somewhere along those lines that we are going to ask above and beyond.
Okay. Any other issues for finance and personnel under miscellaneous? Paul? No, no? Well, in that case, it's one forty-two and standard...